Chair Dr. Mackey, we first wanted to review the evacuation procedures so we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions in the announcement delivered through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the door at the rear of the room. Verbally alert others in the room of the fire and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of headquarters or the A T and T parking lot over the McCullough and Brooklyn bridges, whichever route is safer, and await further instructions. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. Now, will you please stand with me for an invocation? We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards, acting on behalf of our customers, and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We do not have any public comment registrants for this meeting, so I will turn the meeting back to you, Chair Dr. Mackey.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. At this time, we will move to item four, CEOs remarks.
Good afternoon, Board members, Chair Dr. Mackey. I just gave a report not too long ago since we're having a special meeting, so I don't really have any updates right now. I'm going to turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, Ms. CEO Go Williams. At this time, we'll move to item number five, Enterprise Risk Program Overview by Mr. Chad Hoopengartner.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. Good afternoon, trustees. My name is Chad Hoopengartner. We've spoken before. I lead our Strategic Pricing Team and our Enterprise Risk Management Team. So on slide two is the agenda or the objectives for today. What I thought I would do is give a super high level... Mind going to slide two, please? Thank you. There we go. Objectives and takeaways. What I thought I would do is do a very high-level overview of our risk program, talk about the support that we have at the executive level and how that program is integrated into our budgeting process. Oh, thank you. And then I'll end with a review of our enterprise risk landscape. That's something you've seen before. We use that as sort of a great one-pager to talk about the entire sort of landscape of risks. Agenda flows the same way, so I'll keep moving through that. So our enterprise risk program has several objectives. Principle among them is to really make sure that the risks are identified and understood and fully owned by our executive leadership team. And we have that here. It creates a very transparent approach for documenting our risks and then communicating those risks throughout the organization. Risk program?
I just want to note that Mayor Nuremberg is here at 12:06. Thank you.
Thanks, Davy. The risk program is intended to ensure a very balanced approach of managing sort of the cost-benefit of risk mitigation plans. In other words, the cost of mitigating a risk should be commensurate with the benefits of avoiding the risk. And our risk program is pretty tightly integrated into our integrated planning process, our budgeting process, and that allows us to inform the prioritization of people and dollars on investments that we make. Having a successful enterprise risk program is, it's really a cultural thing. It requires very strong leadership and support at the very executive levels of the organization, which we have here, and that's exceptional because that drives collaboration across the business units from a risk perspective. It allows us to not be myopic and insular in defining risks. We get a very multi-dimensional view of risk. That comes from cross-program alignment and again ensures that we're making investments prioritized based on, in part, based on risk. So this is a slide I stole from our integrated planning team. I did that because it really illustrates how risk shows up in the process. Our integrated planning process is its finance, its budgeting, its project planning, but it starts at the beginning of our fiscal year with identifying strategic initiatives in many instances that are designed to mitigate risks that have been identified. Then it goes through the financing and the budget approvals and prioritizing through the enterprise portfolio process. And then throughout the year, there's definition of risk mitigation plans, checking back against the execution of those risk mitigation plans, and then refreshing our risk registry for the next year. This is our enterprise risk landscape. Excuse me. This is a view that we have brought to our aligned risk subcommittee meetings, and it's a great one-pager that shows all of the dimensions of our risk program. And today, we'll focus on the extreme conditions, or specifically winter storm extreme conditions. Paul Barham, you've heard from Paul talking about C E P preparation specifically and more broadly, all of the preparations around winter storm preparedness. But today, Frank Almarez is going to come and talk to you about power supply and natural gas supply, risk mitigation efforts specifically. So that brings us to the end of my comments for today. I told you I'd be brief. From a next steps point of view for the risk program, we'll continue throughout the year refreshing our risk register, refreshing our processes for defining mitigation tactics, and then we'll come back and continue to highlight those risks and the actions around those risks throughout the year, both in the aligned risk subcommittee meetings and in these meetings, the Risk Management Committee meetings. That concludes my comments for the afternoon. Are there any questions?
Any questions, comments? If none, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good presentation. Okay, next, we have rate requests, consideration and risk. We're going to pull that item and move to number seven, which is winter readiness update by Mr. Frank Almarez.
All right. Hello, good afternoon, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Frank Almarez. I'm the Chief Power Sustainability and Business Development Officer, and as Chad Hoopengartner just mentioned, I'm going to give you an update on our efforts around winter preparedness. And I'm going to hit a couple of specific points. The first is around weatherization efforts. The second is about outage schedule changes, and third is power and natural gas supply. So there are things that we can do to our physical assets to prepare them better, and then there are things that we can do to plan better and things that we can do to manage our, the supply of our energy for our community in a way that has a smaller potential impact to our customers if things were to get very, very cold this summer, winter. As always, we bounce everything against our guiding pillars, which you could see on board, I know that on the screen, I know that everyone is very familiar with those, and these decisions are no different. This page demonstrates over on the right some examples for the board and for the public to see actual tangible examples of the physical things that we're doing, and they are labeled with, in words there that explain what they are. The top left one is Temporary Freeze Protection Enclosure. It occurred to me that I have talked for a while about some of the reasons you use temporary enclosures, but I probably have not put one up for everyone to see. In this case, this allows us to have access to a part of the plant that requires frequent maintenance to make sure that it's reliable as it needs to be, but then as well can trap heat that we introduce into that enclosure to make sure that it stays thawed. The top right is a space heater. It's electrically powered. We did add a couple of different options. Electrical heating was just one. This is a good solution when we can because it doesn't require employees to tromp up and downstairs or have to refuel them during an event to cause potential for spills or something like that or to injure somebody. You can see a picture of our freeze protection supplies that we have on hand. We maintain those after every season and make sure that they're ready to go in advance of every winter season. And then you can see an example of a permanent enclosure there. So our priority has been to address areas that were, that had, that experienced freezing issues or got close. You know, in some cases, we noticed, hey, it's getting pretty cold here and we might experience an issue. So through, you know, what I'll call heroic efforts by our employees, we made sure that there was not any, that that issue didn't continue to get worse. So we made investments to make sure that those don't require, you know, personal intervention by individuals. The second is that we're having an assessment done by a third party. This is a well-known engineering firm, and we've talked a lot about different types of assessments, so I'll just take a second to clarify. This is really in preparation for the rules that will come out of the state legislature. We don't have specific guidance yet as to what standards are going to be put in place, whether that be, you know, negative 10 degrees Fahrenheit, 30 mile an hour wind for some period of time, or, you know, whatever. Well, because we don't, we are taking the proactive action to have our system reverse assessed. I mean, we're looking at them to say, okay, if we were going to have to go to a standard that looks like this, what would we need to do? What actions would we need to take? So that when those standards do come out, we're spring-loaded, ready to go. We know that there will be a lot of people wanting to make the same upgrades across the state at the very same time we are, and we want to make sure that we're ready to move forward quickly when those standards come out. And then once again, we've kind of talked about the rest of these. The last one on there that you might wonder what this means, resealing of existing lines. This is where we have lagging, which protects insulation, and if you get water intruding into those, into that lagging, it can be really counterproductive that freeze and thaw cycle can, you know, create some real issues. So we have to go back and make sure that those are sealed. Once again, after each season, this being, you know, winter or summer, we make sure that we gather the lessons learned and work to make sure that we're taking action to further enhance our reliability and resiliency. We were given guidance that we ought to make sure that we change our outage schedule to make sure that our units were as available as possible during January and February. So I thank the board for your guidance and input on that. We have taken that action and implemented it, so there are no planned outages in January or February. These are complex machines, as you know, and as the public knows, and they break sometimes. So it doesn't mean there won't be an outage. It just means we don't plan to have an outage, and that's important. We did have some planned outages during the winter storm in advance of the, you know, the summer that was to come, but we've made changes. Okay, moving on now to the risk assessment and mitigation related to, you know, what I'll call the commodity risk management or the supply of natural gas and power to our community. The first major bullet here just kind of sizes the recent gas burn in the winter storm Yuri. It was, that burn was 30% higher than previous, our previous record, and it was five and a half times greater than the average February consumption. From a commodity risk management standpoint, we, and this being on the, on the gas side specifically, we've increased the purchase of baseload gas that we have available to us. As guests, it's priced at the first of the month and therefore would not have the intra-month volatility. If prices went wild during the middle of the month, as they did during Yuri, we would not be exposed to those prices on the baseload gas purchases that we make. So we've increased the amount of baseload that we're buying. The second is storage capacity. We've added a B C F, a, a billion cubic feet. It's about 20% more storage than we had before, but we've also changed the composition of that, of that storage so that we are able to get 25% more daily supply from our storage than we would have been able to get through, get previously. And as I think folks know, there's two types of storage that are prevalent. One is salt dome storage, and then one is depleted oil and gas fields. Salt dome is able to, able to pull gas out faster from those, so we've changed up the composition some to increase the amount we can get quickly. And finally, we've increased the usage of inter-month gas daily positions, and what that means is that we've contracted with other people so that they will take the risk of the floating gas prices that happen during the month, and, and we, our customers will not, for the portion that we contract for. So the bottom line is we have sufficient natural gas to supply our community, and we have, at the same time, substantially increased the price protection as well. Those being two different things. Getting gas here is on the one hand, and on the other hand, what price will we pay? And we've improved both of those. Here's a little bit of an eye chart. I'll start from the left. The green is, you know, supply. It's adding to our net position of power. And the far-left column, you can see, is labeled current reserve margin. That's 1,100 megawatts of capacity that we have in reserve for what would be the expected winter peak. Just to the right of that, there's a bar that says 300 megawatts. That's purchases that we expect to make in the next, you know, 45 days that would increase the amount of capacity that we have available to us. So when you add those two together, that's about 1,400 megawatts. Now, to the right of that, there's a bar labeled potential stress peak. That's reducing from that 1,400 megawatts. Now, stress peak, if you'll recall, that's a term we use here to describe what the extreme demand might be, how much over a normal winter peak that you might experience if it gets really, really cold the way it did in winter storm Yuri. And that's sized up based on our experience and some forecasting of what that would have been during Yuri. So further, you can reduce our reserve by 400 megawatts using, this is risk to our aging gas steam units. We use a statistical and engineering method called equivalent forced outage rate to estimate this. It always could be less than that. That number could be zero. And, but we plan for what might be, you know, kind of a bad period of time from our gas steam capacity standpoint. So when you take the dark red bar and the 400-megawatt orange bar, that's 1,400 megawatts, and that takes us back down to about, about zero. So with those purchases, 1,400 megawatts of power, but then recognizing that those two potential stress peak and the risk for aging gas steam units could happen at the same time, that would take us to flat. So we would have just what our community needs, but no more, to supply the community. Now, if we didn't have the, you know, moving further to the right, if we did not have those outages, but we did have that winter weather, really severe extreme winter weather, then we would have about 400 megawatts of supply. And if neither of those two bad things happened and this winter looked more like essentially every other winter that we've, that we've had, then we would have 1,400 megawatts of excess capacity for our community to be sure that we were well-covered. We think that altogether, this protects our customers from the extreme winter usage and the potential for generation issues. So from a next step standpoint, we are going to continue to work very diligently to deliver on the commitments that we've made to the committee on emergency preparedness recommendations. We're going to complete our, what we call in, within power generation, we sort of, things take on a life of their own. We have something we're calling the nine-point weatherization plan that has been communicated to the, to our trustees via a board communication and successfully, you know, make those improvements. We expect to have all of those done before December 1st, and we are on track to do that. We will make the necessary power and natural gas purchases that I just described on screen, and we will keep both Operations Oversight Committee of the Board, as well as the Municipal Utility Committee, and finally, you, our Board of Trustees, on our progress towards these actions. And as I said, will be done by December 1st in almost all cases, and there's like one or two things that will take through the middle of December to get done on a list, on a long list. And that's my prepared remarks. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Chair.
Chair, thank you for the presentation, Frank. If we can go to slide eight. I mean, this is a simplified chart, but I mean, this is the brass tacks of our situation. And so if I'm reading this correctly, we're currently carrying a reserve margin of 22%?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. That, my understanding was we were lower than that about two years ago. Am I recalling that correctly?
So our, we may have been. Our current reserve margin has to do as well. It's our own generation plus the expectation from our P P As plus any power purchases that we would have made. And we did make some power purchases already with recognition of the winter upcoming and our change to the outage, our outage process. So that would be the result of all of those.
Okay.
Mayor, I was just going to respond that you're correct. We had a lower reserve margin was an issue all across the state at the time, but what we've been talking about is we've been building these power reserves for a while and highlighted it even more because of Storm Yuri. But yeah, you remember correctly. There was a challenge.
And what is the average reserve margin for the ERCOT, for the other partners on the ERCOT grid? I mean, do we know? That's much higher than I recall their reserve margins normally are.
Yeah, for this, for this year, I actually think that's about in line with the overall ERCOT.
So everyone has been ramping up their reserves?
In aggregate for the whole state, but, and I think a lot of people have taken action to try and make sure that they're supplied for the load that they have, but I don't have that number right offhand, but I can certainly get it to you.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think this is, this is an encouraging chart, is my point. You know, we had been seeing our reserve margin slowly dwindle in the previous, you know, four, five years or so, but taking some proactive, proactive steps in the event of, you know, the upcoming winter, I think was appropriate.
Well, sir, and I will also highlight, this is the winter reserve margin, and the number would be a little bit, it would be actually quite a lot different for the summer as well. So, you know, of course, we now talk about there being two peaks, right? Summer and winter, and that's the one we're talking about now, but it would be a little bit less.
Do we have a goal number percentage-wise for reserve margin in the, in the summer peak?
Our long-range reserve margin target would be 13.75% or just below 14%.
The other thing I'll highlight for you, and Frank talked about it, normally in the winter is when people are taking some of those planned outages, and you see that, you know, we've changed with, with support from you all, and many other utilities are not going to be running their planned outages during that timeframe. It's going to make the maintenance periods more expensive, but rightly, no more, I mean, less expensive than it would be if we were in the middle of a catastrophe. So you'll see, you'll see an overall change in behavior across the state, and we have taken proactive measures here because of that.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because the other thing that I should just mention to our board is that you may have seen more notifications from ERCOT about higher prices or maybe needing to conserve. Well, they're taking more conservative actions on their end, and also they're, because everyone has done, well, not everybody, but a lot of people have tried to do what we're doing here, which is to move those outages out of January and February, that means that now there's a lot of generation, more than usual, kind of out being on outage. And so even at lower loads across the state, you're seeing, you're seeing price volatility that you wouldn't have necessarily seen at those same loads in years before because it's just more units on outage preparing like we are for January and February.
Thank you, Frank.
No, I think Paula and then you elaborated a little bit more about what to expect, and it will cost us more, but at the same time, it's like being proactive. Either you pay now or you pay later, right? So that mentality. But I just want to do, just a big shout out to all of you. I know we've been under immense criticism and pressure these last couple of months, and so I want to thank all of you personally for just, you know, doing what it takes to get the job done. So thank you, Frank, and to all of you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll pass it along.
Really extreme circumstances and criticism, so thank you to all of you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Can we turn back to page five?
Yes.
When I'm looking at the Temporary Freeze Protection Enclosure?
Yes.
I noticed last year that was froze, and you mentioned about the pipe and condensation because that's where the freeze come in. We have in our pipes, you know, insulated and good, but that, that protection right there, I looked last year, was a lot of ice in there and stuff, and we have that well-protected this year.
Yes, sir.
And plus the cold coming from the outside that's full of ice, are we prepared for all of that?
Yes, sir. We took everything, every, there were five instances of pipes of different sizes that experienced freeze issues during the winter storm, and we addressed each of those plus one thing that people might like to know is that we look at a pipe and say, well, this one froze, let's go look at all the other ones that are something like this because if this one froze, maybe those were about to freeze and we didn't notice. So we go and address everything that looks like it. So for every, if there are five issues, we go check, you know, 300.
What about the, the nuclear plant? We had that freeze out there with those pipes, has that been taken care of too?
Yes, sir. Those issues similarly were.
Somebody's on top of that besides, we have someone in charge of that?
Yes, sir. We have an internal person who is on the board of the, of the company that operates S T P, and they are representative, and I and members of my team are in constant contact with, with their team out there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? If none, then we'll move on to...
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Almarez, to convene to executive session. Ms. Davy, would you take us into executive session?
Yes, sir. At this time, the board is going to recess into an executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, deliberations and other authorization on real property under Section 551.072, prospective gifts or donations under Section 551.073, personnel matters under Section 551.074, security personnel or devices under Section 551.076, to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under Section 551.089, to deliberate under Texas Government Code under Section 418.183F, about confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act, economic development negotiations under Section 551.076, to deliberate, vote, or take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in open session and continue the meeting. It is now 12:30 P M.
Thank you. We proceed to executive session. Thank you.
David, would you please bring us back into open session?
Yes, sir. It is 111 and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken. No matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We do have a quorum: President R. Mayor Nuremberg, Dr. Mackey, Vice Chair Gonzalez, as well as Trustee Steen.
Thank you, Debbie. At this time, we have an action item on the agenda. And it's number nine, is Acting President and CEO. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to appoint Mr. Rudy Garza as interim president and CEO of CPS Energy.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Trustee Gonzalez. We have a second by Mayor Nuremberg.